Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 21st School Committee Meeting. At this time, I'll call to order and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Introduction of members, I'll start on this side.
Carrie Dodd at Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunson, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin is with us remotely, and Dan Keefe from Blackstone.
Joe Spag, Director of Finance and Operations.
And Jill Pila-Gallorani, Interim Superintendent.
And no student representative this evening, so we'll move on to consent agenda warrants.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the warrants by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Tara S. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. And next will be the approval of the minutes from June 12th, 2025, and June 26th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Public forum, anyone wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to the school committee agenda. And we will get a Millville Elementary School water update. We have the Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Jen Gill.
I was expecting Peter, I don't know where he is, I just messaged him, but I can give the updates, he and I met earlier today. So we have the permits, so that's all set. And the construction began on July 15th, so I believe that satisfies the requirements of the motion. An update that Peter and I got today, speaking with our water operator, is they are in touch with the vendor for the new technology, and that should ship any day this week, but it will ship definitely by the end of the week. And then, I don't know if you remember, but we presented a timeline in May, and...
Who's Peter?
Everything was very fast, Peter, you were like...
Sorry. Quick.
So, from, on the timeline that we had in May, it was three months for installation, so we feel very confident that that will be done by October 15th, and the goal is to even try to accelerate and get that done a little bit sooner. But with installations and things like that, something could arise, so I don't promise it in October 15th, but we will say by October 15th. And then, you know, we'll of course be providing bottled water for cooking and drinking throughout the school year, as we voted and motioned. And I think that's about it. I don't know if Peter, if I missed anything, so I hit on the permits, the construction began, requirements of the motion, and then the water operator in touch being in touch with the vendor on the equipment.
It's all good.
Yes.
And in your packet, the DEP, I did include, so you'd all have that.
Yes, it's very detailed and thorough.
Does the, any committee members have any follow-up questions for Millville representatives? Well, thank you very much, you did. It was, you know, it was the timeline, it was right down to the wire, but it did come through, and it was a very aggressive action, and we appreciate your hard work on this matter, and Peter, you as well.
Well, we're excited to get this going, too, as you can imagine. It's a big deal for the town and the school district. The permit's pretty extensive, and it's reading, if you will, but it also shows, a lot of the testing is normal testing we would do, but it's required now under this permit, so...
Do you have extra testing?
We get extra testing and so forth. And technology is exciting, so...
The fact that it's a one-year pilot program is, I'm sure it'll be scrutinized heavily by the state and local officials.
Yes.
Yes, lots of more insight.
I don't...
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
I know it says like all of the different monthly tests that will need to be done. Will the testing results be available on Millville's website for the public, to see what the monthly tests are?
So we have been posting test results, now we have a water page, I don't know if we post anything?
We don't really post the, but I think we can, and I think we probably will, it sounds like that makes good sense.
Yeah.
And we can incorporate that, so that we would have McClure, you know, there's a whole bunch of forms that come with the test results, they're hard to decipher, so we'll have that distilled down by McClure as part of this package.
Maybe like a one-slide summary?
Yeah.
Because we can come every month and give an update on the tests, or at least provide that for all of you to look at and read.
And I don't know if Jen mentioned, our DBPs anyway, have been testing, the last three months of tests, which does not include July, have been moving way down below the maximum contaminant level that has dinged us in the past, so they have a good handle on that at this stage, too, prior to this.
And to Carrie's point, maybe come back in...
We could come back every quarter, with like, here's like, the results and where we are, sure.
Yeah.
And if we have significant up, do you know when your August meeting is?
August 21st.
21st, so in a month. So yeah, if you want, I'll come back at that meeting as well, because with the equipment being ordered, the installation's gonna start, like she told him to book starting the week of August 4th. So the 21st is two months after that, so we should have a pretty good handle on where we are with the installation, and if it will run through the October date. So I'm happy to come back, and I'll see if, and one of us will remember to email the water operator to attend. Neither one of us remembered this time. I thought he was doing, he thought I was doing it.
Well, I did, well...
And then no one did it. Well, they gave an update, but I meant invite them to the meeting.
Well, there'll be a lot of eyes on this, seeing that it's a pilot program, and the state is going to, I'm sure a lot of other communities with similar situations will be watching for the results of this as well. Is there any other questions or concerns?
I've had, just to, not to interrupt, sir, but I've had very good interactions with your superintendent, to keep her well-informed, I'd like to think, even before you all know, even before Jen knows sometimes.
You think we don't know.
But I appreciate her, you know, ability to communicate back and forth, it works.
Excellent, I don't think it requires another vote, I think...
Because it was a trigger.
It was, this would have triggered a vote, contrary to what we voted, if the results were different at this point, so...
Yes.
Any further questions while we have Millville here? Well, I thank you very much, we'll see the kids back there at the beginning of the school year, then.
Well, I'll be back August 21st.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
MSBA update, I always forget Tara Larkin, but Tara, you want Jill to give it, or do you want to give it? Jill?
Yes, okay. So it's a brief update, we've met a couple of times since the last time we had our school committee meeting. On June 25th, we actually met, and the design team presented an analysis of all the different building options, and the requirements for our preferred schematic report submission that is going to be due to the MSBA. So that was the first step. And then we also had, on July 9th, there was a follow-up meeting that we actually, it was more of a working meeting, and we began to, I think, a little bit deeper, review and discuss the next phase of feasibility, which again, is review of the preferred schematic, or the building options. We talked about some of the options where, you know, do we look at the building now, and do we upgrade that? And then we talked about the two main components, which was the addition renovation and the new building. So on the 23rd, which is this week, on Wednesday, the school building committee will be meeting, they will be reviewing, discussing the final proposals and the designs that are going to be presented, in their draft form, of course, and then we will be voting on those design options, if we're gonna be looking at the addition reno, or if we're gonna be looking at a new building. And a lot of things go into those conversations, down to the smallest minute details of rock formations and the elevation. I mean, if you look at where our school is now, on to one side, you know, it goes up to the track, and on the other side, it goes down to the field, so that does play a part as well, and a lot of things we discussed, if you were to attend our meetings, are the impact, if any, to our, the teaching and learning, and to the students. That was a lot of discussion that took place. On the 23rd, will be our meeting to vote, as a committee, for our design option, design, which will either be the renovation or the new school.
Very good, any questions?
Tara, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think we captured it, thanks.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the report of the superintendent, Madam Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Great. So we have two new members of our leadership team that I wanted to introduce this year. First, I want to introduce our new interim Director of Student Services, Ryan Ucamana. This is Ryan Place. When Ryan came to us, he has a lot of experience, he's been a special ed teacher, a team chair, a director of student services, and when he came on board, it was great that he had a lot of the experiences that we needed, so he can jump right in. And I am working very hard, and I've discussed with Ryan, to transition the work that I've been doing over all of these years, yes, to let go. I'm working hard at that, but Ryan's right in the to step in. He immediately came right into ESY, wanted to walk around, get to know what's going on there, and kind of taking those things over, so we're happy to have him here. So Ryan, if you wanted to share anything with the committee?
Yeah, no, I just appreciate the warm welcome that's happened, and from the committee, and from the members of the community, and from the other staff members I've gotten to meet. Extended school year has really gone off very well so far. I'm appreciative of what Jill's been able to hand off to me, and we've been able to really collaborate on that, which has been really exceptional to be a part of. The students are doing great, which is the most important part of it. We've been spending a little bit of time looking through everything, looking through our systems, looking through programs, looking through 280-something IEPs, going through all of those, looking at our processes, really evaluating all that during the summer, so we can be in that great space to start the school year off in September, in August.
And it was really nice to hear from an outside person when Ryan came in, about how, I guess, well thought out and planned our ESY.
It was the most, and this is somebody who's had to run extended school year multiple times, the extended school year, the way things were running, from organization to how classrooms were staffing, to the level of care that was demonstrated by all the staff members, and not only at the program, but also in creating it and implementing, was really wonderful and enlightening to see, and one of the things that drove me to want to be here for this time.
And Ryan has been able to maintain that throughout the summer, it's been great.
So, thank you.
Any questions for Ryan? Well, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And then we also have our new Food Services Director, Melissa DeCastro. So Melissa and her transition here, we are so happy to have her, because I know that Joe, not that I don't enjoy Joe doing food service, but Joe and Christine Pazulo, they've been helping to kind of get you up to date on things, and you came in at a time where things were moving at the speed of light, and you caught them very quickly, and we have been doing, you've been doing a wonderful job with the staff that you have, in feeding our kids, all of our kids, across the district in the summer, so we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
How do you feel your transition's been going so far?
I'm good, sorry.
It's been?
No, I'm good. I have quite a few interviews set up for this week and next week, to get those other positions filled. Summer programming has been going great, the feeding, we've been able to cut down on a lot of waste from the first week, just getting the numbers, you know, the accurate numbers, and tracking all of the meals each day. Yeah, so I feel comfortable, and I'm happy to be here. Yeah.
And I'm sure you're very happy that she's here.
I'm ecstatic that she's here. We meet every week, just to make sure things are going the way, to give whatever support we can to Melissa.
Yeah.
But she comes with a lot of background and knowledge, so we're really looking forward to the next school year coming.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We always talk about how we're like a community, and how everyone, you know, steps in. So not only did Melissa step into the Food Service Director, but she also then kind of jumped in and was like, what else can I do with the kids?
Yeah.
So that was huge.
Thank you.
And I want to also do a shout-out to our food service, because we had staff that worked in food service, who had some other opportunities over the summer, didn't come in, but we had other staff members in our district who stepped up.
Wow.
Yep, we had some of our other staff who stepped up to help support this program and our kids during, for feeding during ESY. So it was really nice that we had that.
Nice.
Okay, next, just a brief summer programming update. I did ask, we have a lot of summer programming going on this summer, and actually, it's through all of our buildings, so I did ask for just a little update from all of our folks who are working with our kiddos. I had asked Darlene, captains' practices are up and running for our sports, it's soccer, volleyball, cheer, field hockey, and she also wanted me to mention that they do have basketball, it's open basketball on Thursdays, and open soccer on Tuesdays, correct? And a reminder that they're open, available for all students of all ages, so they would love to increase the number of students participating. We also have our special extended school year that we talked a little bit about, and at the high school, we have our credit recovery that's going on, and we also have a small class of our English language learners that we're working with over the summer to better prepare them for when school comes. We also have our CCLC that's running here at the middle school, they have about approximately a little over 50 students who are participating in that. Some of the academic themes this summer, they're working on weather and climate and endangered animals, and they're engaging on a lot of hands-on activities in those areas, promoting scientific thinking and environmental awareness. They have daily STEM and music blocks, and some of the clubs they've done during CCLC is photography and social media, picture writing, cheer, cake decorating, and they've also had some experiences with assemblies. They've had the Ecotarium come out, Science Heroes and Mad Science, and I did see some pictures. And they also said that one of the highlights was they actually went to visit the zoo, and I'm sure it's not the day today, when there was like a people trapped on the...
Sky ferry stop.
That wasn't up there. Christina has a lot going on in her building, besides our ESY house there. She has approximately 35 students coming in from grades one to three for her programs, and they're working on their math and ELA skills, and there's also some extracurricular work that they're doing with art. Her team, and I think this is important to mention, her MESILT team, they were trying a new approach over the summer to kind of encourage reading during the summer in meaningful ways, and they've held two so far in-person reading activities. The first one they held was Mrs. Jones came in and read a story, and then her husband, Mr. Jones, he, I guess he's the creator of Sour Grapes Comics, he led the students with a process of drawing the main character for a book. The second in-person activity was Mrs. O'Donnell, they read a book and created birdhouses using a stem to prevent squirrels from entering the house, they worked on those.
... squirrels or something with the title of the book, so they had to make a birdhouse that would not allow squirrels to get in.
Yep. And then you said the...
Pictures of that, too.
Yep, there were pictures up there. And the third activity, it's being held this week, Mrs. Harpen, and there, you're scheduled one more in-person event. Also, Mr. Eisenberg has been sharing three books while on his bike trek across the United States with the kiddos, and Christina's also been in the process, and this is gonna be in an update to the community as well, sharing, we had, I think it was six of our teachers, staff members, who recorded stories for the kids over the summer, and I think it's part of Christina's doing like a bingo type of activity with the kids, and listening to the book or responding is part of that, so lots going on with our...
One book, like we have asked, we decided to do a bingo, and make it more fun for them to read, instead of having to read one book, we're trying to do a bunch of different activities, virtual and in-person.
And then Mr. Schaefer, we know band never stops, it goes all the time, but he did run a summer band in Richmond Camp, and it was five through nine, and some of the activities they did was some music-related games, exploring literature, note-reading music escape room, and they work on improving their fundamentals. And I did want to give a huge shout-out to our jazz band, so last week, I attended the superintendent's conference, and our jazz band played for the superintendents and assistant superintendents across the state, and they were absolutely amazing. I can't tell you how many folks came up and said, we're very jealous, you have an amazing band, they did a great job. So it was really nice that they were, yep, that they did that, it was great. And then I know we already had an update from services, so there's a lot going on in the summer.
Excellent.
And then we wanted to give a small fall sports update, Darlene, if you want to...
So first, I just wanted to go over some planned dates upcoming, so I'm planning on having the open house for all fall sports on August 11th at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. This would be for students and parents, to meet with myself in person, meet with the other coaches in person, and kind of go over all the guidelines for fall sports. I also plan on having a coach meeting for all the fall coaches on August 4th at 4:30. This will be reviewing the final schedules, reviewing tryout plans, field use for each team, and reviewing our handbook and policies. Tryouts and practices, the earliest they can start is the 15th for football, and August 18th for everyone else. For new uniforms, we have three sports in the rotation for new uniforms this year, field hockey is one of them. At the same time, I'm ordering field hockey, I'm ordering girls' basketball and tennis, trying to get just a better deal, ordering them all at once ahead of time. For our current registrations, we have 46 girls registered for girls' soccer, this is grade six through 12. 45 boys registered for soccer, grade six through 12. Cross-country, we have six. Cheer, we have six. Field hockey, we have seven. Football, we have two. And girls' volleyball, we have four. You can see some of the, some of the sports clearly are really low in registration numbers. We just need to get the word out that students should register as soon as possible, parents do not have to pay a user fee right now. User fees won't be due until August 29th, which is after tryouts have completed, so they have two weeks after tryouts have started to pay the user fee. So the earlier we can get kids registered, the better. In terms of fall schedule, for football, we're just looking for a Thanksgiving game. We have a few schools offering, but we want to make sure it's a good fit, it's an important day, and we're committed to it for two years. So we have a few schools that we're trying to decide between. Two of them are Oakmont and Cathedral. Oakmont is very competitive, so it may not be the best for us, and Cathedral is pretty far away, so we're keeping our options open right now. For boys' soccer, boys varsity soccer, we have 16 games and two scrimmages. Girls' soccer, we have 17 games. Middle school soccer, we have eight so far, we need to complete the rest once schools decide their alignment with mid-level waivers. For field hockey, we have 18 games. For volleyball, we have 11, we're looking for at least five more games for volleyball. For cheer, the, I met with the varsity cheerleading girls, they decided they don't want to compete in a competition in the fall, they just want to do it in the winter, so they'll just be doing sideline cheer, and they'll be following the football schedule. And then cross-country, the league schedule is complete, we may add one or two meets, depending on what the coaches' preference is. In terms of fall coaching positions, for football, all of our coaches are returning as of now, with Jamie Caparella remaining as head coach. For field hockey, we appointed Haley Boucher as one of the co-coaches, and we're just pending final confirmation for our second field hockey coach. For cross-country, we have one coach, Marshall Harvey, returning, she was mainly working with the middle school this past year. We're still searching for one more candidate to either co-coach or take over the high school cross-country team. For middle school soccer, for both boys and girls, John Christina will be the head coach for both of those teams. For boys' soccer, we have a new varsity coach, Matt Wheeler. For girls' soccer, Kevin McCourt is gonna return as the varsity coach. For cheer, we had a really great candidate that ended up backing out, so we're back to square one, looking for candidates there. And for volleyball, we're still searching for coaches, we're looking for two coaches for volleyball, and one coach for cheer. And we are still interviewing for an athletic trainer, we have one candidate kind of in the process. I'm working with two organizations to help us match with an athletic trainer, so there's different resources to kind of find the best fit for what we're looking for. And in the meantime, I'm preparing an athletic trainer room, so where athletes can be treated. This will be in between the two locker rooms down in the basement of the high school, and then there's also gonna be office space, so if the athletic trainer ever needs to be in the school during the day, they'll have an area for them. And then the final thing I want to bring up is just my proposal to add a JV team for both boys' and girls' soccer. As I mentioned, we have 46 girls signed up and 45 boys signed up. Usually, there's 11 soccer plays on the field, including the goalkeeper, and the maximum students you can have on the team is 20. I'm really worried, last year, we already had really high rosters, for just having two teams, a middle school and a high school team. For instance, girls' varsity soccer, there was a ton of girls on the bench that didn't get playing experience, and the problem becomes, when the older girls graduate, we're gonna have a huge gap in skill level, huge gap in numbers, and it's just not going to sustain our program, so I'm hoping adding the JV team can keep up with our growing numbers for soccer, and make sure we stay competitive over the years as people graduate. In your packet, I think there's a budget of my proposal, there's obviously some expenses to adding two teams. The additional uniforms, we went back through the inventory, we had ordered new uniforms last year, I believe, for soccer, I think we only need five for girls and five for boys, we're gonna do like fill-in uniforms, so they match the same as varsity. So instead of 360 for each, it would probably be 360 total. Soccer teams, we share the supplies, so we share soccer balls, nets, goals, so there shouldn't be any additional cost for that. There'll be additional cost for transportation, the estimate I have here is, is, there's a lot of factors that go into the price, but this is the average that we paid for buses this past school year. I'm not necessarily asking for a school committee to cover this. If we can get approval for a JV team, like, I could find a way to make this work in our budget. If anything, just the coach stipends may be the most difficult for us to cover within the athletics budget.
I'd like to add to that, we do have, we will have some funds available between athletic gate receipts and athletic user fees, so we would be able for next year, probably, if we can't find it in the general fund, which is what we try to do first, but if we can't, I think we could transfer the funds over, some of the expenses into those funds and use those, and then in '27, we could actually budget for this team to be taking place, so it's not being funded with one-time use.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we think we can fill two JV positions? Because I noticed you said there's one coach for both middle school girls and boys.
Yeah, I have two candidates in mind for the JV positions, of course, they have to accept and be willing to. I think those are a little bit easier to fill than the middle school position. John Christina's in a unique situation, he just retired, so he, he wants to be more involved, he originally offered to take both positions, so I think it'll be a little bit easier to find the JV positions.
Will the schedule work? Will they play opposite days, boys and girls?
Usually JV plays before varsity, it depends on the school, but most of my schedule is, and I've been scheduling JV games just by chance we get approved, because you can always change it as it gets closer. Usually JV plays before varsity, so they're both home together, and they both travel away together.
Whereas with middle school, boys and girls travel together.
So they go together.
Back-to-back.
So the girls play first or vice versa?
Yeah.
Okay. They don't play at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
I would like to motion to approve the JV positions for both boys' and girls' soccer.
Second.
Motion made by Carrie, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? So, and you said about 46 kids signed up for both?
Yes.
You could get more.
Yeah, I'm assuming that there would at least be like five people that would register the week of school, or maybe they just joined the school late or something, but I know the coaches have been doing a great job of promoting registration as well, so that's also why we have such high numbers.
I've seen the middle school boys' team last year with like 27 kids.
Oh, the middle school teams are huge.
Sitting there, only 11 on the field at a time, it's a lot of kids.
Yeah. All right, with that being said, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have.
Thank you.
And Tara. Sorry, Tara.
Sorry, I'm delayed.
Are there any questions for athletics while I'm here?
I just had a question about the, so we don't have an athletic trainer yet, you have a candidate.
Yes, yep.
So are you already planning for the worst-case scenario where we don't have one?
Yes, so the same...
Without your request for...
The same site I used last year, where you're posting like per diem positions, I'm just gonna post all our games up now, and people can accept. There is a fee if you accept an athletic trainer and cancel, so it's just, it's just a difficult place to be in. Usually I have 24 hours, so once an athletic trainer applies to accept that athletic trainer, and then they have 48 hours to accept on their end, and then there's a cancellation fee if, if, over 48 hours if I cancel it.
But you gotta do it, you gotta cover...
Yeah, yeah.
You don't have a choice.
The cancellation fee isn't a lot, it's not like 50% of the athletic trainer fee, it's... It's just like a, like a processing fee.
I don't know if this is a question for you or a question for HR. Where did we post the athletic trainer position? Not just school spring, right?
Um, indeed, school spring and MIAA. Yeah. I've also reached out, so I, I got my master's degree from AmeriMac College. They have a big athletic training program there. Um, I reached out to the dean to see if they have like new grads that are interested. Um, I think with it being a part-time position, we are looking for new grads that are willing to just get their foot in the door. Um, the candidate we have right now though, he has 25 years of experience, so we'll see where that goes. Yeah.
Thank you, Darlene.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then my, the last item on the agenda for me is sub nurse daily rate. If you look in your full, uh, folders, we've been having a hard time getting nurse subs. And if you look at this, um, yes, we had our nurse leader go through some surrounding towns to find out the rates. So if you look at Blackstone Millville, our current rate for a nurse, a certified, either LPN or RN to come in, it's $120 a day. And then if you look at the other towns, um, we are clearly well below, um, some of the other towns. So what we'd like to propose is to increase the amount to $150 for the nurse so we can be competitive. Um, Joe and I sat down and we went through, um, the current money set aside. We also went through and pulled every single nurse and their kind of attendance and absenteeism and things like that, so.
Yeah, when we looked, we found, going by last year's absenteeism, about 45 days in total amongst all the nurses. So it wasn't, wasn't very bad actually. But if we increase it by the, to the $150, it's about a $1,350 increase to the district in cost if the 45 days holds.
Right. And we do have nurses that may go to conferences, but we have a healthcare grant.
That's right.
So we didn't include those days. For example, our lead nurse or our nurses may go to, it could be a lead nurse conference or a nursing conference. Those are usually covered by our, a grant, but the monies that we totaled here and the absenteeism are for, you know, sick days, personal days, days like that. So it would just put us in the, in the ballpark of being a little bit more competitive, um, so we can kind of increase our.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion to increase the sub nurse daily rate to 150 to be competitive.
Motion made by Tara S.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? I'll just say I was very surprised that they show up for $120 a day, the responsibilities they have, so. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the business office. Joe?
All right, I've got a few things on here today. First one's the budget journal entries. The bulk of these entries are, uh, reallocating budget funds and grants based on amendments and how we actually expended. There are a few, um, budget corrections and adjustments that are being made too. And some of these do apply to the year-end allocation that I do, but that's later on in the, um, agenda. I'll do the closeout with you. So really that's it, but you'll see that most of these did cross function codes, uh, on each one of them. I'd be happy to answer any questions, any individual one, if you, if you have any.
Hearing none, no questions? We, you want a motion to approve these budget journal entries? Motion made by Jane, seconded by Matt. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, the next one's just the.
I was just giving Tara a second, but.
Oh, sorry.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
Um, just as usual, the personnel changes that happened for the month of July is here to be put on file, um, just for your review.
We have a lot going on with hiring. We're doing really well this summer.
I did give, put a group of paperwork in front of everybody. It replaces the, uh, next few pages that I have in here, um, for the expenditure report, the, um, budget closeout and the E and D projection. Only, the only reason I did that is I was able to finalize, uh, actually Carrie and I submitted our E and D today. So hoping that we don't have any from the DOR saying there's any problems and we maybe even by the end of the month, we'll have an E and D for next year that we'll know, have certified. Knock on wood. Uh, but this is the updated copy that I have for the, uh, projected year end. All the journal entries are done. You won't see, the only lines you're going to see deficits in for the fiscal year is in the very last page and it's for our choice sending and charter sending. That technically those are considered legal deficits because we budget one number, but it changes throughout the year. But we ended in a very positive position and, and by no means, we still have the audit to go through. There could be some slight changes here, but I don't anticipate anything major. We ended with a surplus of about $308,000, uh, for fiscal year '26, right where we wanted to be. Are there any questions on the report itself or any of the lines?
Joe, do we need to approve that expenditure report as well or?
Um, I don't think we've done any approval. It's more of just information.
Maybe because you had the E and D there. We wait for the official number on that, right?
Yes, yes. I'll give you an update on that, but the next one will be an approval for the budget, uh, the FY '25 closeout.
All right, I knew it was coming.
There is a, a new cover sheet, but your original has all the journal entries attached behind it. Okay, that really didn't change. A couple minor changes here. But you'll see if you break it out by function code, by the thousand to the 9,000, the balances, uh, the budget that we had, the year-to-date expenditure and the current remaining balance at the end. And again, you'll only see it, the deficit under the out-of-district tuition, which is caused by the choice and charter sending. I did include the encumbered year-to-date in here too, which I'll go into next, um, just to show you on this. Also as a part of this, I wanted to give you an update on Circuit Breaker, uh, the Circuit Breaker Fund and the Transportation Fund. We've got an increase in our Transportation Fund above and beyond what we anticipated. So we're going to end with, again, with a hundred percent carryover, even with that increase of $859,362 and one cent. Um, and the Transportation Fund, same thing. They, they ended up funding the per pupil, um, rate from $75 per pupil to 150. And that translated into these, these lines for us. Um, so our Transportation Fund again is higher than what we anticipated or budgeted for next year, but it, it'll, the carryover will be $927,633. So it's a nice, um, safety net for the district.
Yeah.
I think it'll help cover a lot of the anticipated expense coming up. But yes, I would, I think we do need an approval for the closeout entry though, Dan, just so you know.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the closeout as presented by Joe.
As submitted tonight, the tonight one.
Yes. Uh, motion made by, was that Chuck or Matt over there?
Aye.
Chuck, seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
So the projected E and D, and again, I, I preference this because the Department of Revenue always comes down to me and says, why are you telling them anything? Because we haven't looked at it yet. And they may, there could be changes that could come up, but I think there's plenty of room in here for any changes they may find. I can't fathom what they'll find, but I think everything looks great. Who knows? Um, but we're able to submit tonight, which is great. I was, I wanted to be the first district in the state to get our E and D in, and I'm hoping I did that. I think Menden Upton is always first. I told Jay that you're no longer first. So we'll see, we'll see. Uh, so this is just the projected, what we do is we come up with our undesignated fund balance, beginning balance that's based upon the activity from last year. It's a starting point that we have. And any, any funds that have slight deficits in it are listed here, because we have to cover that with the general fund. These are very minor deficits, deficits in some of these funds. A lot of them are timing issues, were probably, they would probably go away next year. Um, but I was able to clean up all the funds that had these little tiny amounts and deficits in them. Those are gone now. So that's all we have. We do have some, uh, reverse payables that are in the system that just again, it's a process of doing the accounting, um, to give us our remaining E and D of $1,253,212. If we did 5% of our, uh, operating budget, it would be $1,360,249. So we've, we're almost, we're under the 5% cap by about $107,000, which I think is kind of a bullseye. And again, it gives us a little bit of breathing room in case the Department of Revenue comes down with something. I, I don't know what they could possibly find. So it looks good. And hopefully the next, I'm hoping that maybe if we got it in early and everything looks good, maybe we can get a certified E and D, maybe at the next meeting, or the meeting following that, which would be great.
Excellent.
And then after that is, this one I, I would request that we have a vote and an approval if it's okay, is the Reserve for prior year encumbrances. These are all the encumbrances. Any purchase order that we create in the prior fiscal year enroll, if it's not paid for by July 15th, it has to be encumbered for the reigning portion. And this is the list of the funds that we have encumbered that were not paid by July 15th. And I'll just go through them real quick. Um, school specialty is $3,580. Those are cafeteria tables that were ordered, uh, and they'll get delayed in shipping. So obviously we're not going to pay them, but we don't want to turn the order down either. We want to make sure we can get them in. Um, FM Emergency Generator, there's two here, one for $13,295 and another one for just under $2,100. They're both related to the, um, uh, MES generator repairs that we're doing right now. Uh, one of them is just maybe waiting on an invoice too. Associated Elevator Company, same thing, MES elevator repairs. It's done, we're just waiting for that invoice to come in. Uh, Stadium System is the uniform cleaning for, that, um, Darlene's doing. That, that didn't take place yet, but when, when it does come through, we want to be able to pay for that. Uh, the Robert E. Brown, our FY '24 single audit, I'm actually meeting with them Friday to go over the single audit. It's, it's pretty much complete. We're going to review it. Once that's done, we just want to be able to pay for it. It's about $5,000. Industrial burner, that's the middle school boiler repair that you requested that we carry that $16,000 over out of our encumbrance and out of our fund balance to encumber. There's some minor office supplies that were done from Amazon Capital for $270. Uh, we did our year-end maintenance work, Telstone Garage for the silver van, that's about $1,257. MPS Virginia, that's the high school books that were ordered. Again, we're just waiting for those to come in and be invoiced at $1,170. Viata Home Healthcare, uh, year-end invoice for their services throughout the year. That's coming in after the fact. Uh, Unemployment Services Program of $43,190, that's our June unemployment invoice. That's expected. It could be a little bit higher, a little bit lower, but that's been consistently what it's been the past couple of months. And I also set aside, are requesting to set aside $30,000 for the middle school, uh, for the MES move. We have an invoice of about $18,000 from the movers, about $1,200 to get the copiers all done and then some extra, because we're actually finding that we're going to ask the movers to do more than what they quoted. Um, so we're anticipating that to be a little bit higher too. That's it. So I'm looking to encumber $82,233.81.
Motion made by Jane.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion?
I don't know if it's on topic. What's the, what's more?
What's that?
What are we asking them to do more?
Well, there's going to be, there's actually more furniture, more equipment that, that they actually looked at, that we've discovered that yes, we can't leave this here. There's a lot of furniture at MES and Scott, you can correct me if I misspeak, that doesn't work for those kids that has to be moved back to the, to the complex. A lot of storage type things that are going to be done. I don't anticipate it being $12,000 worth, but it, it'll probably be higher.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Uh, the next one is for a STEM equipment grant that one of the, uh, science teachers has, uh, been awarded. Hopefully we can accept the award. It's for $39,708. It's comprised of STEM equipment and $10,000 for professional development. It's a, it's a great grant. Great opportunity.
Motion to accept.
Uh, motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Tara, Matt and Chuck in unison. Uh, any other discussion? That's a, that's a great, uh, that's a great acquisition.
Congratulations to whoever.
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now we'll, we'll end all the happiness. Um, I regret to inform you that we did not make the security grant. I just.
I will just finish this motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The ayes have it. Sorry, Joe. Go ahead. I've been hesitating because I was, I wait for Tara.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, the floor is back to you, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, I'll say it again. Uh, we did not meet the deadline to get the security grant. The SAM, the System of Award Management, uh, is still being worked on. Working with the federal government is a little challenging. Uh, I did just send over the, what they've requested today with an update, so hopefully that'll at least get that in place. So when the award does come around next year, we can, we'll be ready to do that application for the 500,000. But I just wanted to give you an update on that. And I do have a, a, a piece here, um, I'd, I'd like to add, it's not on the agenda. It's an update on the chapter 70. Is that, it's okay to do?
Send to finance.
Yep, it's this piece of paper that I added.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
As you know, we budget based on a estimate that we get beginning of the year and then things change quite a bit. And it's really just a shell game that they're playing with us. So our chapter 70 didn't change. We're still at the $12,080,000, but our two, charter school tuition reimbursement went down by $96,850. Uh, and the regional school transportation went up by 2,570. Our school choice receiving tuition did increase by $53,542. So the net, in, the net change in the reimbursements and, and money coming to us, we dropped by $40,738 to the governor's final budget. In addition to that, we had a, an increase in our choice sending and charter sending, net increase of $90,516. So we have a hit to our budget of $131,254. The, the choice sending and the charter sending changes throughout the year. You know, December they'll do an update, then they'll do an update at the end of the year. So hopefully that'll improve for us, but if not, we'll be, I'll be watching the trend. But if it doesn't improve, we'll just have to take steps as we go forward to find some savings in other areas, watch our spending, just like we do year over year, to absorb that $131,000. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You could have, you didn't have to add that. You had all good news.
I know. Save it for next month.
Moving on to the facilities report.
I'm also wondering if this would be a good time, but Scott, yes, we need you up here, but this is part of you. Um, now that, um, we are anticipating, not anticipating, we're moving our kiddos back to MES. I just wanted to, um, which I guess this can go into facilities and MES water. We have, we have, we've been very proactive. We have a plan that was actually, we developed prior to, I think it was in June as a team. Joe, myself, um, Scott, Matt, Christina, um, have been meeting over the last few days to kind of review that plan, review some of the details. And pending, you know, the outcome of tonight's meeting, we have our plan in place to start this week. So our community will be notified of the, of the move, as well as our staff. We already have the, you know, the movers on standby. Again, to be proactive, waiting for the decision of this committee. So we are ready to move forward to make sure we have all in place and all in, all in process. And as a team, we reviewed that. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we, we have our plan and we are ready to execute as soon as, if needed, and if is needed. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So the high school industrial burner, we're still waiting for that pump to come in that feeds the boiler system. I anticipate that being done during the annual boiler maintenance cleaning. The last month, we developed a large sinkhole in the teacher's parking lot, just next to the storm drain. All the water flows across the parking lot into this one drain, and there must have been a crack where the water finally got in and washed out everything around it. So our brand paving came out on Tuesday, and we'll be getting a quote from them to repair it. While they're there, I'm also going to have them patch several potholes that are developing in the parking lot. Nothing fancy, let's just get the asphalt in there, just in hopes that we get a new building. Lower soccer field, I noticed it was starting to turn brown, so I went down and checked on the pump system, found that the pump had tripped out. The system runs during the night. It actually starts at 8:00 PM. And because there's so many zones to that, it needs to run, shut down, rebuild, start back up. So it runs from 8:00 PM to approximately 6:00 AM. So that's why it went unnoticed. But it's back up and running. Does look like I may have one sprinkle ahead that's not working, so I'll check that out. There's only one corner that looks a little brownish, but it's not on the playing field, but still needs to be addressed. Saturday, 7:12, we noticed a freezer alarm going off during the building check. When I went there at 4:30 PM, the temperature was at 30 degrees and holding. I thought maybe the system was going through a defrost cycle. So I returned at 7 o'clock approximately to find that the water, the temperature had dropped down to 18 degrees. So I felt confident that it was just a thaw cycle. However, on Sunday, freezer alarm went off again. When I showed up again, I thought maybe thaw cycle, so I hung around for 40 minutes, and the temperature did not drop. If anything, it was rising, and the system was not running. The fans were not coming on. So I made the call to, after informing Joe and Joe, to move the food to FWH Middle School Freezers. Proactive, I guess. Some of the food they could use for the summer program anyway, so it kind of worked out. Come to find out, the compressor head did trip off. It would trip off, reset, trip off, reset. And that's why the fluxing temperatures. Joe Warren and his sons came out. They cleaned the compressor. System's running fine now. Sewer pump station, as you know, back in May, it stopped working like it should. Had Palmer Electric come in, they looked at it, got it running. And again, it's doing the same thing. So in talks with Palmer Electric and the DPW, we decided it's best to simplify the system. It's more complicated than what it was designed for. So he's given us a quote to rewire the system, get it back up and running. But in the meantime, I go down occasionally, open the sewer cover, look inside, you know, which stuff is in there, and decide if I need to run it manually or not. But it's not a big issue. The smell is atrocious. Oh, my God. Fire extinguishers inspections, several of them require replacement. I asked why we're getting hit all at once, because this is happening at other schools, and I'm being told that the prior technician that was coming in was not doing his job. Therefore, a lot of them have failed. I'm working with them on that. And again, we have the money to cover it, but it's just, if it's not needed this year, I'd like to put it in the budget for next year. And we will replace some this year. Summer cleaning continues. It's going as scheduled. And the fire alarm system has been tested. A few of the detectors were found to have weak batteries in them. I ordered the batteries. We called the fire department and take the smoke detector down, change the batteries ourselves, saving the district money. FWH Middle School, custodians were doing their cleaning down there, and they noticed that the floor around the drain had actually sunk in of the sinkhole. Don't know why. We're going to pull the tiles up around it, regrow it, level it, you know, obviously fill the, fill the hole in. And we have plenty of replacement tiles in stock, so it's a good thing. So that'll be done. Saturday, 7:12, called in for an intrusion alarm in Classroom 106. The custodians had started their cleaning process down there, and I'm thinking maybe they created dust. And a little sensor on the wall over there may have got dust in it or on it. So took it apart, cleaned it, put it back together, and it's functioning as normal. Again, glad it was 11:15 AM instead of PM. Still waiting on parts to reassemble the boiler, as Joe has said, we're incoming the money. Fire pump and backflow preventer were tested. Everything passed. There is a pressure relief valve that they would like to replace. Nothing crucial. They will get them, there's a quote to have that done. And that's done through Encore, not industrial burner. Fire extinguishers, like I said, were inspected. Several of them have expired. Gym floor was re-earthened, looks nice and shiny. A little smelly, but nice and shiny. And again, summer cleaning is going, is going as scheduled. A little tougher this year with all the summer programs that are going on here. This building never had that situation. So custodians are working it out and moving right along. In fact, the whole entire third floor is done, done, and half of the first floor is done. They'll be moving up to sixth grade, sixth grade, main level, probably next week, as soon as the summer programs are done, actually. That's it for middle school. JFK summer cleaning is going as scheduled. Fire extinguishers, several of them need replacing. Fire alarm system has been tested, and no issues were found there. Tuesday, 7:15, head custodian showed up, noticed a broken window in the JFK cafeteria. It's a window that's up higher, and no weed whacking or mowing had been done around the building. So I'm not sure how that happened. I went on the surveillance cameras, tried to track it down, but unfortunately, there was a spider web in front of the surveillance camera, so it ran 24 hours nonstop. So unfortunately, we can't find anything that caused that. Who knows? Could have been a bird flew into it, but not sure. Millville Elementary School, like Jill said, we had a plan in place. We've been doing cleaning right along and painting. One of the classrooms, we repainted so that we can reorganize that. Going to be replacing a carpet that was kind of in bad shape. Actually, this classroom floor had outlets in the floor as well that would have been a tripping hazard. So we went ahead and removed those, filled the holes in, and going to lay carpets that we had actually bought for JFK a couple of years back. Luckily, we were able to roll these carpets up. So we're going to install those over at Millville. And again, these carpets were just laid on top of other carpets that were in disrepair. Fire alarm system, we had to replace the batteries. Back in early July, late June, we had a power outage, and the alarm system kept going off. And when fire department showed up, they discovered that the batteries were weak, so I went ahead and changed those out. Fire extinguishers, no issues reported there. I think we had our brand paving come out. They're going to give us a quote for the back walkway that leads from the rear park, side parking lot, I guess you could say, into the kindergarten area. It's currently asphalt now, so we'll just tear it up, new asphalt down. There's a nice garden. I don't know if anybody's been up there recently, but one of the Millville police officers is installing a flower garden, vegetable garden.
We've built it up. It's all planted. I saw stuff was starting to grow, weeds, but they weeded it all out.
Weeded it.
It's got nice stone all around it, so.
Rainstone all around it. Looks nice. And let's see, the town of Millville installed a new 911 tower next to the water tank. In order to do so, they had to trench across our parking lot and down along the fence. That is all complete. They just need to come back and repave that trench that they dug up. Trench is filled in. They still have up a temporary fence, which probably isn't needed, but it's still there. And that's it. Any questions, concerns?
Can I ask you, this, these fire extinguisher inspections, is that by a private company?
Encore. We've used them every year.
And so they had an employee that was incompetent, and that's why they all need to be.
That was the excuse that their technician gave.
They actually told you?
He no longer works for them.
They covering the cost?
The fire extinguishers have a lifespan.
Yep.
And, but there's a tag that has to be put on yearly.
That's right. So they're.
If I didn't check, you know, they probably just replaced the tag without looking at the fine print on the.
So what it is is.
Testing that.
Right. Like Chuck was saying, every six years, they have to take them out, repressurize them, clean them, in some cases, replace them. I guess there's a new code also that if the fire extinguisher has a seam around the middle of it, they no longer pass code. I don't know if you've heard that, Chuck, but that's what it was.
The goal is to have them staggered, so you're not replacing them all at once. But because this happened, we're replacing them.
And the full life.
You started off buying them all at once.
That's right.
Yeah. Like here, 2003. So every 12 years, they need to be replaced. Six years, repressurized, 12 years, replaced.
Yeah, we use this company every year to do these checks.
What's that?
We use this company every year to check these.
This company has changed hands a few times. It used to be Northeast Fire on Pulaski Boulevard, and now they got bought out by Encore.
And so they, they were not properly tested. How many, it looks like three schools of fire extinguishers, three, three different buildings.
They don't test them. They just look at the date.
I understand that, but it's, by their own admission, they, they did not look at the date or do the required.
I'm still questioning them on that as well.
Do we have fire, fire extinguishers that work?
Oh, they all work.
They all work.
Yes.
And they're up to code?
Well, some of them do need to be replaced because they're at their sixth year or 12 year.
Because of their, I mean, we would have replaced these earlier.
Yeah. Last year or this year.
I guess I'm missing, because we were hearing that like.
It's normal to replace them.
It's normal to replace them, of course, but all at once. And you're saying, yes, because we put them in all at once, but that was, but they're also admitting fault on one of their employees' ends that could have put the district in harm. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's, that's what I understood as well. And that's why this technician no longer works for them.
That's my point of, that's my point of question.
Is it a contract we have with them?
I'm checking to see if it's up with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not pleased with it.
That's not an excuse. We're going to accept that, or I'm going to accept that we just had an employee that didn't feel like doing his job.
Yeah, that's not something I would have admitted if I was.
Well, this is just one, this is just one service tech giving me an answer as to why I question them, why all of them all of a sudden expire in every single building. And that was his excuse I gave. That was not from the corporation itself.
We should probably get something from the corporation themselves in writing as to why.
You would have to choose to replace them earlier to get them on. To stagger them.
Stagger them.
So what we're, but what we're, not to make a bigger thing of this, but what we're facing here right now is that an employee of this business said that because of their own.
Negligence.
Negligence. We are now, the district is either at a disadvantage or in harm's way or in some way. I think we should have something in writing from that business saying exactly what happened. I don't see why that would be.
So let's follow up.
We're talking about safety a lot here, you know, Millville Water. We're talking about safety with a lot of things here. And I want to at least know that the fire extinguishers work.
They do work. Every fire extinguisher has a gauge on it that says.
Yep. And let's get that in writing from, from Encore. Please.
I'd also like to see how many needs, because they'll say in these reports, how many need to be replaced and what costs associated with that replacement. I get what the red flag was is you said stated that the employee or whoever was inspecting them said that the last guy didn't do his job.
So we can have an update for you at the August 21st meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we move on to facility. Any other questions for Scott on his update? I won't even ask about the sinkholes.
In the bathroom.
Yeah. It's happened at the high school. If you ever walk in those bathrooms, it looks like the drain actually raised up out of the floor. But this is a first over here. I mean, this building is not 50 years old. It is on the ground floor, so I don't know what would have caused it.
All right. Use of facilities requests.
I'm dying to know what this one's for. They bring in hazardous material?
So they've done.
I can explain this.
Yeah, Daniel.
This is the town of Blackstone. Is this the town of Blackstone Hazardous Waste Day?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're having, the town of Blackstone is having a, the Board of Health is having a hazardous waste drop-off day for Blackstone residents on August 9th, 2025, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
It would be helpful if it said drop-off day or something.
That would have been my recommendation as well.
Yeah, description would be nice.
Yeah.
Household hazards is for those of you.
Want to drop your house off?
That old paint.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, they'll be, it has to be accepted for us before they start to publicize it. But yes, it'll be old paints and, and there'll be a list of. There's actually going to be a chemist that runs in and everything else, so.
Very tough.
They actually did this about 10 years ago, if I remember correctly.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Old tires, paint, antifreeze.
Yep. No cost to these Blackstone residents.
That is great.
So anyway, now that I gave that explanation on behalf of the Board of Health.
Much appreciated, because.
I saw the same thing. I'm like, what is this?
What is this?
Yeah.
We're practicing hazards?
We always are.
Anyway, motion to approve.
Thank you, Jane.
The drop-off hazardous waste.
We just, there's nothing about hauling it out of here. It's just.
Stockpiling at this.
Scott's like, great, that'll be on the next facilities update.
We'll put it in the sinkhole.
Yeah.
And watch it grow.
We have to have Clean Harbors come out and do a.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. And then we have surplus requests.
So we do have some surplus, and we listed them out, first with the middle school. If you look at the list that's in there, these are a lot of books that are no longer in use, they're outdated, a lot of them are textbooks that aren't used anymore. I do see some pickleball paddles in here and plastic scooter, but they're no longer in use, they're broken or splintered. Um, so I don't know if we want to go through these all, do you want to do them in all, one fail swoop, or would you like to do one at a time? So we have all, so from something from every building.
Just one. One swoop?
Yeah.
No objection, everybody has the list.
So there's your middle school list. Um, the next one, and there's, um, has to do with, um, some high school technology items, and on this, I'm gonna let Joe explain. So these are the items, on the first page, it talks about Rex Robotics, Lego Mindstroke Kids, that are things that we want to surplus and get rid of. And on the next page, there's an email in here, and I'm gonna let, um, Joe explain this, because this might be supporting us and another school at the same time, for kind of like a switching of equipment. So, Joe, if you want to...
Uh, Dan Saltzman came to me and said that, uh, another school district he works with in Framingham, a school, has, um, eight sixty-five inch touch view screens, they're very similar to the, um, the Viewsonics that they call them, the, the screens that we wheel around, that they, they're looking to dispose of, but they want to take twenty of our, um, projectors that are out of date, that we don't use, they actually came down at the beginning of the summer, they want to do a swap. So we'll give them our twenty, that we're just gonna actually surplus and get rid of anyways, they'll give us these T, these, uh, monitors, and he said, really, the users won't even be able to tell the difference between what we have. So I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity for us. I'm not sure why they're getting rid of their touch view screens, but we'll take them.
Yeah, we'll take them.
So that was the high school tech. The next one is the MES book list. It's a rather lengthy book, uh, list, so what we would like to be able to do, Christina and I were talking, to be able to first offer these books to some of our kiddos, do you know what I mean? Put them out on the, on the desk, they're more of a middle school related, but if they're out there and we want our kids reading, you know, give them the opportunity to first come at some of the books. Some of them are, can't at all, but we thought, we'd start there, and anything that was left or not usable, we would surplus. So this was our biggest list. And then the high school book list, again, these are, are, um, books that are, again, outdated and not used anymore. Any questions on any of those?
If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion to allow the administration to execute the surplus request of the items requested.
So moves.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by Carrie, I think, was it you, Carrie?
Yeah.
Uh, any further questions?
Do we do the switch ones separately, or does it matter?
Um, I'm not sure.
One where we're gonna switch equipment, should that be separate?
Well, I think we're giving it the, the...
It's our surplus, right?
Administration to...
Figure that out.
Execute the surplus.
Okay.
So that's in the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Uh, before we go into executive session, there's school committee forum, if anybody would like to add to that.
Two things. Um, there was a facilities request, I believe, at the last meeting or two meetings ago for a football camp, and I know we tabled it, and we didn't really discuss it.
It was not, it was not...
So is that not going forward?
It was one, they didn't have our district to discuss.
Okay.
It just didn't happen.
The only other thing I have is, starting, um, August fourth through the ninth at Unibank, um, they will be accepting donations for school supplies.
Oh, yeah.
Um, all through the week, uh, it's Unibank, Telstone and Son Bus Company, and St. Vincent de Paul of, uh, Divine Mercy, uh, will be accepting all sorts of donations, book bags, um, school supplies of all sorts. The only thing we don't ask, uh, for you to bring is, please, no monetary gifts or gift